When they observed it, they said, uh, here's what we found, the weaknesses of the classroom. And they says, how can we help you? So one of the ways they've, uh, gonna help us is through, uh, financial resources. Go straight to the classroom. We were weak in math and science. So one of the things they are going to do is they're gonna provide us, uh, through this STAR Quality Initiative is they're gonna provide us with math and science resources for our center. Um, you know, and I'm sure we all realize the importance of math in Lee County right now. And that's one thing we can build on at the early age is these math skills in these students. And they will provide this program for, uh, for one year. The mentor will come in for a total of forty hours and she is there to help us, uh, have a better center for the children.
And now just say that we have a hundred and fifty-two fourth graders that will be going to kindergarten this year. So we're gonna need to have all the help we can to recruit for Head Start again, but we have an excellent program and look forward to finding another hundred and fifty-two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we recognize the V S B A art contest winners, Mr. Carter.
Yes, we, uh, have completed our art contest for the Virginia School Board Association's Regional Spring Forum. We are allowed to take three pieces of artwork, one for elementary, one for middle, and one for high school. We do have those displayed in front of you here. You may have to step down in a minute to go around and see them after the meeting's over so you can take a good look at those. We have some additional pieces of art on the table back here to our left, uh, of other students who actually participated in the contest, but our winners are up front and we wanna recognize them at this time. Our elementary winner is from Rose Hill, third grader Harley Crockett, and she has the fuzzy panda. Our middle school winner is from Pennington Middle School, Amber Lacy. She's an eighth grader, and she has the blue hair girl. Our high school winner, of course, is from Lee High School, twelfth grader Emily Darty, and she has pencil sketch. So congratulations to all of our winners for the Virginia School Board Association Art Contest.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Our Regional Spelling Day, Ms. Adams. This is getting to be a habit of this young man.
It is a habit of this young man, but I just wanna commend this young man, and I'm here tonight to present Tyler Hammons, student at Pennington, to be recognized by the board, Mr. Carter.
Tyler is a seventh grade student at Pennington Middle School, and he participated again this year in the Regional, uh, Spelling Bee in Knoxville, and this is Tyler's third time to, uh, come out as a school winner and, uh, participate at the, uh, Spelling Bee in Knoxville. Now, this year, he was their runner-up countywide, but he continued on to Knoxville and participated, and he finished with a strong tie for third place at Knoxville. And we just wanna recognize Tyler, and he is the son of Jason and Vanessa Hammons, and I know they're very proud of him. And we have a little plaque that we would like to present Tyler for his hard work and dedication. He put in a lot of time and a lot of studying in order to make it down to Knoxville and to do what he's, he's done over the years. So as Mr. Harper said, he's getting to be a familiar face, and we're very proud of him.
But can he spell count?
You laid out a star breakfast tonight too, didn't you, Tyler?
Yep.
Now to recognize the schools with the highest percentage of attendance, Mr. Carter.
Okay, we, uh, again are recognizing the schools that had the highest percentage of attendance for the month of March. Johnson Middle School came in first place at ninety-five point three percent. Saint Charles came in second place with ninety-four point six percent. So congratulations to Johnson Middle and Saint Charles Elementary.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Our public expression period is next. Anybody want to take the allotted five minutes to express any views or opinions? Now's the time to do so. Hearing none, I hear this, this period will come to a close. In our report section, the V S B A School Law Conference, June sixth, two thousand fourteen, Mr. Carter.
Uh, basically, um, that's the information of school law conferences on June the sixth, two thousand fourteen. Registration is due by, uh, May the sixteenth, if anyone's interested.
Our V S B A Hot Topic Conference, April twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen, Mr. Carter.
Okay, that's when the board members are interested in attending that. Mark Lionberg, the superintendent of Bristol City Schools, will be presenting at that, and, um, of course, the deadline for that is April the eleventh, if you'd be interested in attending.
The two thousand fourteen V S B A Southwest Regional Spring Forum, May eighth, two thousand fourteen, Mr. Carter.
Okay, the Southwest Regional Spring Forum is a great opportunity for the board members to attend, uh, the, the training, and it's on May the eighth. They used to try to hold it, as you know, originally, and I think the past few years it's been in Abingdon and Bristol. This year it'll be held in Tazza County, but, um, I'd certainly encourage you, if you can, to attend, and that's where our art will be displayed, and our students will compete originally in the art contest.
We got a menu on that yet?
Don't have a menu yet, Coach, but soon as we get one, we'll pass that on to you.
Please do.
Okay.
The Virginia Superintendent of Public Instruction, Mr. Carter.
Uh, as you probably noticed, the State Superintendent of Public Instruction, Pat Wright, uh, has announced that she is gonna retire as Virginia's top public school administrator effective May one, two thousand fourteen. Governor McAuliffe on March the thirty-first has announced that the appointment of Steve Staples as the State Superintendent. Uh, Staples, of course, has most recently served as the Executive Director of the Virginia Association of School Superintendents and has dedicated his career to improving public education through innovative educational programs by focusing on the specific needs of local communities. So, uh, Steve Staples will be our, our next State Superintendent.
Okay, Dr. Samantha Marsh Hollins's letter.
We have a letter, and then you have a copy in your packet there from Dr. Hollins, uh, the Department of Education. She had a couple staff members that attended our, uh, in-service or professional development on January the twentieth, and basically has a letter in here kind of commending us for the steps that were taken and telling us what we need to do in our school improvement plan, uh, basically saying the plan should focus specifically on the implementation and progress, monitoring of research-based interventions and instructional practices for students with disabilities. Um, she's asking that we keep, you know, agendas and meeting minutes of, of any of the, the meetings that we have, and the, uh, improvement plan should be monitored by the division leadership team.
Any comments or questions? Next on the agenda, the Cloudoscope Fine Arts Festival Friday, that's this Friday, April eleventh, two thousand fourteen, from five P M. to nine P M. at Lee High School. Ms. Brown.
We don't have the full program ready because they're still printing, but I do have a, uh, actual agenda that has, uh, the art, but it is this Friday from five till nine. We have seven art pieces. Uh, we also have a staff section that we've had some staff, um, present some pieces, and we have, um, elementary music display. You'll see that, you'll see that, the agenda that's there. Uh, the forensics, um, Thomas Walker and Lee High School both be presenting the forensics. The choirs, the chorus will also be presenting, and all the bands from, um, the ensembles, beginning band, seventh grade band, and the Lee High Band will also be doing the Cloudscope. And next year is the twentieth anniversary, so we expect to be doing a lot of, um, exciting things for next year, but this year's is, um, an athleisure themed Cloudscope. But as you say, we have a lot of very talented students in our family, just by the foot lid we've seen here tonight, so we'll be very, very excited for that.
State budget proposals, Mr. Carter.
Uh, former Governor Bob McDonnell presented his two thousand fourteen sixteen, uh, biennial budget on December the sixteenth before joint session of the Senate Finance, the House Appropriations and the House Finance Committees. And, um, the budget, um, introduced, uh, the introduced budget, uh, bill, uh, that Governor McDonnell introduced, has also, uh, been attached with a Senate, House Bill and Senate Bill thirty, and the, on, on February the sixteenth, the Senate and the House Appropriations Committee, um, changed, um, the, um, two thousand fourteen sixteen biennial budget as introduced by Governor McDonnell. Uh, the budget recommendations that they have for the, the Senate Finance Committee were adopted by the full membership of the Senate, and the recommendations of the House Appropriations Committee were adopted by the full membership of the House of Delegates, excuse me, both on February the twentieth, two thousand fourteen. So that basically, uh, you know, makes three different budget, uh, proposals that we have. And then, um, on March the twenty-fourth, our new governor, Governor Terry McAuliffe, released a two-year budget for the legislature to consider and to pass in order to conclude its work for the year. The governor's budget is based on the budget introduced by his predecessor, former Governor McDonnell at the beginning of the legislative session. Governor McAuliffe has a hundred and four amendments that reflect his priorities, including using Virginia's own federal tax dollars to close the health care gap. In Governor McAuliffe's budget, he also has proposed a two percent salary increase for state employees, K-12 teachers and support personnel, college and university faculty, constitutional officers, and state-supported local employees. Um, no concrete numbers obviously have, have come down from the state yet on the budgets, and, and all the budget figures are basically preliminary at this point, um, because we actually have four different proposals. Um, the word that, you know, we're kinda getting is that we may be, uh, up in the middle of June and even heard possibly we could hit July without a budget this year, which I'm not sure has ever happened before, but, but it doesn't sound good. I think that from what I understand, legislators on both sides of the aisle of the Medicaid issue are, at this point, dug in, and of course, some of you all may, may know more than I do, but that's my understanding, so I'm not sure when we'll have a state budget. Most of the divisions in Region Seven that are working on their budgets, Denise and I did a, attended Region Seven Budget Meeting, and most of the divisions, I think, are using the governor's proposed budget, Governor McDonnell's budget, and those are the numbers that we've actually been using right now as, as preliminary numbers just to, to work from, to work on our budget, what, what we've been able to do. So, uh, until we get some concrete numbers, some solid numbers, um, you know, we're just trying to do the best we can to plan and prepare when the budget does come out.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I ask a question that Mr. Carter probably may not be able to answer, but I know one of the, uh, proposals that Governor McAuliffe made was to allow the teachers to participate in the state health insurance plan. Uh, I wonder how closely tied that is to the budget, or whether that might be a separate item that the G A. might go ahead and pass.
Well, there again, as you said, I'm, I'm, that I can answer, I, I wish I could, but I, I certainly can, and I, I have no idea how closely that may be tied to the budget. But I do know there's been some consideration for some time of allowing, uh, school teachers, school employees to become part of the state plan, but we'll, I guess, wait and see.
Anybody else? Next, the School Nutrition Program Federal Administrative Review, Ms. Darty. Mr. Carter.
Ms. Darty, uh, let me say while Ms. Darty's coming, we just got through going through a federal review, and, and I wanna, I, I put a, a star in her crown, a feather in her hat, or whatever you wanna call it, but we came through, we came through this federal review on, on school nutrition with, as you see on your report, no corrective action required, and, and that's almost unheard of. To be honest with you, most of the time when they come in to do a review, they're gonna find something, but they did not find anything, and we have a clean bill of health here, so I just certainly, Ms. Darty to come in this year new and, and to get a report in her first year is, um, phenomenal, to tell you the truth. So, Ms. Darty.
And I certainly wanna thank the school nutrition staff for the outstanding job they do, because without the cooks and the, the people and the trinkets, so to speak, uh, we certainly wouldn't have done as well as we've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Enrollment, Mr. Carter.
Our enrollment as of the end of March stands at three thousand one hundred and eighty-four students. That is down thirteen from this same time last month, but it is up two from this same period last year. And of course, we budgeted on thirty-one fifty, so we, we actually are, are holding our own real well, so we've, we've done real well as far as enrollment's concerned. The state has projected thirty-one eighteen for this year. We budgeted on thirty-one fifty, and we're at thirty-one eighty-four, so. And actually, our average, um, from September through March is gonna be more like around just, just under thirty-two hundred.
Do we, may I, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Do we know where these thirteen went?
Uh, no, I do not. Um, I, you know, without checking the doors to see if they went out of state, or, or I do know that we have some go home school.
That's another question I have.
Yes. But I'm not sure about all thirteen of them.
His laptop.
Um, good evening. This is a summary of our financial activity for the month of March. Our state receipts totaled two million one hundred twenty-nine thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars and fifty cents. Federal receipts and reimbursements received totaled two hundred twenty thousand three hundred forty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. Local receipts were fifty-four thousand two hundred fifty-six dollars and sixty-one cents, and the insurance revenues totaled three hundred twenty thousand six hundred thirty-eight dollars and nine cents. Our total revenues for the month of March totaled two million seven hundred twenty-four thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents. As of March thirty-first, we've received sixty-two point eight-two percent of our estimated revenues for the year, and at the same point last year, sixty-four point two percent. Our expenditures for the month of March, general fund payroll and accounts payable totaled two million five hundred eighty-four thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars and eighty-three cents. Title one payroll and accounts payable totaled one hundred twenty-seven thousand six hundred eighty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents. Head start payroll was eighty-eight thousand four hundred thirty dollars and ten cents, and our insurance payments totaled three hundred thirty-five thousand eighty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents. Our expenditures for the month of March, our total was three million one hundred thirty-five thousand seven hundred seventy-nine dollars and twenty cents. As of the end of March, we had used fifty-nine point fifty-eight percent of our appropriations for the year, and at the same time last year, had used fifty-nine point seven percent of our appropriations.
Any questions?
Just a, one question, maybe more of a statement than a question. Uh, on the expenditures, Denise?
Yes.
With, uh, bus driver subs, are we paying more subs than maybe hiring a full-time driver in some cases where that category is kind of over?
That would be my first guess, but as I work on a projection this month, I'll do detailed reports on that.
And I, I noticed several areas are kind of over a hundred percent.
It's not unusual at this point in the year, but we'll look at that close, more closely as we get to the end of the year and do our journal entries to clarify that.
I can't tell you that we had two of the bus drivers that actually retired last year. We've not replaced them or used a sub driver, so that's part of it.
That's kind of what I thought might have happened.
Any other questions? Thank you, Denise. Under Action Agenda Items, A, Consider Approval of Commencement Exercises for Lee High School on May thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, and Thomas Walker High School on June sixth, two thousand fourteen. Mr. Carter.
Um, as you have, uh, a letter there from the principal at Lee High School recommending graduation be held on May the thirtieth at seven P M., um, or commencement, I'm sorry, commencement exercises, and, and also Thomas Walker, uh, has a graduation scheduled on Friday, uh, June the sixth at seven P M. is recommended, but the principals and I would recommend that the board approve the principal's recommendation.
Make a motion to accept this. Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any discussion? A motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those dates are approved. Under B, Consider Approval of Lee County Career and Technical Center Annual Plan, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. Mr. Carter.
Uh, Mr. Ingalls unable to be here, but you have in your packet the, uh, local plan for career and technical education for the coming year, um, that needs, uh, the board's approval. The advisory committee did meet at the vocational school today and, and approved the plan, uh, I would recommend approving.
Make a motion. Have a motion to approve this plan, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Have a motion, a second. All in favor of approving the Career and Technical Center Annual Plan, please say aye.
Aye.
That plan is approved. Consider Approval of the, uh, this was tabled from last month, Consider Approval of Promotion and Retention Policy, Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Carter, members of the board. At the last meeting, uh, I presented the promotion retention policy, and I took your all suggestions and revisions, and I think you have your new policy in front of you. I have any questions? I think we changed the order, so it's all, I think, reasonable better. We're still asking that this be approved and be put in place for the current school year. That's the recommendation of all the principals and many of the teachers.
Make a motion, Ms. Darty. Have a motion, a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
Yes, I've got a couple of questions. First off, uh, due to the changes in, in the number of S O L. tests that was passed in General Assembly, will you not be revising this policy next fall?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, also...
Current ones got the S O L. of head and half.
Also, um, if you look at page four, where you have the, the classes that they must take and pass, and then the, the test, um, I, I kind of found the wording a little confusing there, and it might be easier just to say that they pass three of the four core classes, and then the test, and one, excuse me, one other S O L. test.
Okay.
For all of those. And then, if you look at grade five, a couple of questions there, it says, uh, along with three of the three S O L. tests, or should it be three of the five?
Three of the five.
And also, I think there at the very last, they maybe want to be promoted to the sixth grade rather than fifth grade?
Correct.
Since it is fifth grade. And the, the places where it says English, and I, I know I may have been the one that brought that up the other time, but in doing a little research, I think the tests are actually reading tests.
Yeah, there's a writing and a reading.
Read, right, so we might want to specifically say writing test, reading test in those. And a couple of little others I'll get with you later on, later on, but I, I will say this much, I, I, I will probably oppose this simply because I, I don't object to the entire policy, I just object to when this is being made. I think we should have done this at the beginning of the year.
Any other discussion? Have a motion, a second on the floor to approve this, uh, I guess as amended, Brian, with what we just said there. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. No, our name.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Consider Approval of Increase in Meal Prices Based on State Mandate, Ms. Darty.
In your packet is the increase for next year. Uh, we can do ten cents or four point nine three, which comes out of the balance of nickel, and as of last year, we did the same, just rounded it up to the ten cents that's allowed
Basically, we have to do this to meet state mandates. It's not really a choice. Of course, we have to have the board's approval, but it's not really a choice that we have.
Make a motion. Have a motion, a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Consider Approval of Revised Grant Application for Restoration of Sequestration Funds?
Again, you had in your packet, uh, information regarding the sequestration funds, and the Head Start program is asking that you approve that we amend the grant number, zero-three-C-H-zero-one-six-two, that was submitted in August for the program year of December the first, two thirteen, through November the thirtieth, two fourteen. And with this amendment, we are able to apply for the COLA as well as the restoration of these sequestration funds.
Any questions?
I'll make the motion.
Have a motion, a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Consider Approval of the Special Education Annual Plan, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, Ms. Brown.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Carter, and Ward, you have before you in your packet the, um, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen Level Special Education Annual Plan, Part B, filed through application report, and it was approved, well, reviewed, it's not required, but approved, but reviewed by the Special Advisory Council on April the second. And, um, any questions anyone has?
Any questions? If not, then a motion to approve?
Sub move.
Have a motion, a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Consider Approval of the Overnight Field Treaties, Mr. Carter.
We have two, uh, from Lee High School. Uh, one of them's for all-state course on April the twenty-fourth through the twenty-six in Harrisonburg, Virginia. The other is for the, uh, band. Uh, it's actually after school's out on June thirteenth, fourteenth, it's to Charlotte, North Carolina. And the third one is from Lee County Career and Technical Center for the Environment Contest in Pulaski, Virginia.
Just a, Mr. Chair, may I? Uh, the trip to Carolines, Mr. Carter. You'll notice that... You'll notice the date and then the departure date.
I'm sure that's.
Might want to check that out. Was there departing?
No, no, I don't think there's going to be departing. These are the stuff.
Have a motion to approve.
Show move.
Have a motion, a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Need a motion, pay the bills.
Make the motion.
Have a motion, a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pay the bills. Reports or recommendations of the board, Mr. Twigg.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I just, I guess this is either a report or a recommendation, it's just that, just hope everybody will be patient as we go through this budget process, and as Mr. Carter mentioned earlier, it may be June or July before we find out exactly what kind of financing will be available from the state and so forth, and I just hope everything goes well. It's tedious, and I know, I'd like to thank Denise and Mr. Carter for putting so much time into the packet, the budget packet, and I think things are looking fairly good at this point, and like I said, I'm just asking for everybody to be patient and we're trying to do the best we can.
Thank you, Mr. Twigg. Ms. Jesse.
Mr. Carter, you might want to kind of check this out a little bit. I attended the military, the Navy Military Ball this past Saturday night, and I don't remember now whether it was Chief Skibbe or Lieutenant Bunch, but mentioned that the academic team had placed third, and I don't know whether that is in the country or area or unit or whatever, but that was an accomplishment. I want to, may I recognize them on that. Something else, I know you may not be able to answer immediately, but in talking about this year's school calendar, when the school calendar was approved, I believe it just had one work day at the end of the year. And I know myself, I've talked about it, and I think Mr. Twigg talked about it last month, about people working on Saturday, but I don't believe if we go with that one day.
Calendar, we have to.
That we have to, so we might want to look at that.
The only thing is if we have people that may not have finished up and have to come back.
Right, right, but I believe it's just, I think, we're just in that old habit of having two days at the end. I think that's just what we thought about. And just a suggestion for the budget committee, I was kind of reviewing back some of the formulas for salaries and things, and where the administrative salaries used to be a seventeen percent supplement, and we reduced that back down to eight thousand five hundred, I believe we may need to further reduce that down because it is a possibility that the eight thousand five hundred may be greater than the seventeen percent increase. So that would be another way that we can kind of cap things a little bit. And just a request, if it wouldn't be too difficult, I'd like to know how many people that we have above the SOQ positions, required SOQ position.
The, just in case, I think there was some discussion about the two percent that Governor McAuliffe had proposed. Now, when Governor McDonnell gave the raise, it was two percent for SOQ positions. Governor McAuliffe's is not SOQ related, as I understand it.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Wade.
I've got a couple of things. One is, I'd like to see if there's any possibility during the last two or three weeks, I have had some people's requests, I went over some athletic fields, particularly practice fields, football field at Pennington Middle School and Jonesville Middle School are in horrible condition, and only going to get worse. And I think the problem is that these fields have not been aerated for several years now. We've let those things go, and I don't know much about farming and even growing grass, but I know the ball field needs to be aerated and also reseeded and fertilized, and I'd like to see the possibility because it would be probably much cheaper in the long run. I haven't been to Tom Walker, but I can't imagine that theirs is not the same way. I'd like to see the possibility of us buying an aerator, which would be pulled behind a tractor. Don't ask me to cost one or anything, but we need one badly, and I believe it would cost more to try to rent one of these than it would to own one and have it permanently where we could do it all the time. I think all you golfers are pretty familiar with aerating a thing there, so I would hope I could get a little action on that part right now, that we could start looking so the last day of school or whenever we use that field for the last time, that we could do that to have it ready for fall seasons.
We asked Mr. Ingalls to do that for us, Mr. Carter.
Yes, I already am. Coach has already mentioned that to me, and I've asked him to be checking on an aerator, so he's looking now, trying to locate.
Okay. I also have something else, that is that I understand that there is some property for sale right beside of Lee High School, and my experience has always been that if you can buy any property next to one of these schools, you sure better get it when you can get it. I think the town of Pennington went through a long process before they finally got some action done and bought some property the other day. This is mostly hillside property, but it's, they're near the football field, and I know that we as a school board do not own that property. My understanding is that the supervisors would act on that in the county, but I would like to make a recommendation that we get word to the supervisors to check on this property. It's about six acres, I think, there.
Belongs to NC Dory, I believe.
I believe that's correct. Now, that was about a week ago. I don't know if anything hadn't been done on it yet, but I think we need to get word to the supervisors and see if they're interested in buying a piece of property. I can tell them several ways that we could already use that. Great, great things. That's it.
Would someone read us into executive session, please?
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we go to executive session to consider consultation with the legal counsel, Section two point two dash three seven one one A seven, and personnel section two point two dash three seven one one A one of Dakota, Virginia.
I think Mr. Twigg, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.